Polly, hey, John.
I'm having trouble with my video. I'm gonna re-reboot. Sorry.
Hello, everybody.
John.
And you don't look like you're at Alta.
Is that, or she's got?
I can see it.
App.
Hi. Yep, I'm, I'm in Oregon.
Ooh.
Hi, everybody. Yep, halfway between Mount Hood and Portland, going to the airport.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for dialing in.
Yeah, of course.
What he does. We corresponded with, we could inform, that's great. We corresponded with Paul Moxley about joining. Aaron, what state are you?
Oregon.
Oregon, sorry, I missed that.
I'm in Oregon, yep.
I thought maybe you meant, what mental state? Because we heard the Oregon part.
Isn't Oregon a mental state, mental state too?
No, that's Alta. Alta is a state of mind.
You know, I read, I'm reading Lady in the Ur Bucket. I'm reading Maury's copy of Lady in the Ur Bucket, which is outstanding.
Really?
Uh, I think it's, I think it's fabulous. I'm riveted, and it's pretty dry, so. But, and, and the chapter about Alta mining, I hope I don't ruin it if you haven't read it, but the chapter about the mining, you know, mining in Little Cotton Canyon concludes with the story about the phrase Romantic Alta. And it's really good. It's really, really good.
What am I, it is? Do you want me to get the recording going?
Yes, sure. Let's see, what?
We're ready.
Well, I don't think we are, the three of us.
That's enough.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Except for Paul, and I thought David, I was hoping David would be here.
Dave is not able to join, yeah, which is kind of a bummer, um, because I know he had a particular perspective. And Paul, Paul. We didn't quite get Paul in the loop, but there he is.
Here's Paul, here's Paul, here's Paul.
Least his head.
His ladder. There he is.
You're on mute there, Paul, if you care. There you go.
Okay, well, let's get, it's a, let's, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, um, Alta Planning Commission, Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Public comment, anybody from the public in person by chance? Nope.
If you're footsteps.
Pardon?
Seems like we might have, um, perhaps the ex-officio member of the commission walking up the stairs, but maybe let's just see whether that is in fact him.
Okay.
But there's no, no one joined online.
No one online, no one in person. Okay, okay. Um.
There is.
Yep, oops, okay.
I don't think it's working. Where, where do you want me to sit that works best for the?
Um.
Right where you stand.
Just sit there, I mean.
You do?
Yeah, as long as you can see the screen.
You'll be able to see us, and you'll be able to see the screen, so.
Okay.
Actually, ahead of the table, right where you guys are, would be better for us on the screen anyway, right?
Ahead of the table?
Yeah, at the, at the east end, right where you were.
East end, down here, yes.
Yeah, right by your, right by your walking stick.
Okay.
If that works for you, it works slightly better for us, to be honest, it's one camera view.
Fine.
It's one camera shot.
Yeah, good.
Okay. Um, seeing as no, uh, no public comment, uh, our agenda, oops, there we go. Our agenda item today is, uh, review and approval of the minutes from our meeting on July fifteenth. And, um, it was obviously quite a very important meeting. I'm glad we could all be there. I thought it was very healthy and good discussion, wide-ranging. Um, big picture, little picture, all, I think it was, it was very healthy to, to talk through that. Um, but I agree with Chris that it's, it was of the magnitude that we need to have a meeting luckily online uh, to go over, to make sure the conversation in the meeting is reflected well in the minutes. Um, so I want to end that, of course, with the approval, but let's, let's, um, maybe one at a time, maybe Jeff, I'll start with you, since you were next online, if you have any comments on the minutes themselves, and we can open up for discussion of the, well, actually, it's, it's not only genuinely have an open discussion, we can do that a little bit, uh, about the meeting itself, but let's focus on the minutes for now, please.
Okay. So I have, just, and, um, my page references are based on the pages in the, the packet, so it includes the page numbers for the, um, agenda.
Sure, that's fine.
The first one is on page thirteen, paragraph three. Go up.
I have these numbers on this, so that would be above this, probably this page eleven.
Like in the PDF.
Three, right there, it says amendment of the two thousand and four stipulation agreement. That should be two thousand and fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you did say two thousand and four.
Oh.
But, but, but your notes did say two thousand and fourteen, so that was.
That's what kind of affects that.
That's how to do it, right.
My knowledge, there is no two thousand and four.
Same. Okay.
Um, and then on that same page thirteen, um, the paragraph that starts, Polly McLean stated that um, amount is non-negotiable and capped at eight thousand gallons. It's, it's really eight thousand gallons per day.
Yeah.
At that location.
Okay.
Um, page fourteen, and this is where I guess some more substantial comments, um, on item nine. I don't think it really captured the essence of the dialogue that was going on. Uh, my recollection of the dialogue is that, uh, Dave brought up that he wanted to keep the height of the building, um, no higher than the height of the summer road. And, uh, then there was some dialogue about, you know, the summer road is sloped, so they had picked, uh, what they viewed as the elevation at the middle of the building, and that was at, um, eighty-two, um, fifty, and so I think we need to modify that item basically to say something along the lines that, um, the building, um, shall not exceed the height of the summer road at the center line of the building, which was represented by the estate to be at elevation eighty-eight fifty.
Okay, I miss my memory.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go, you go for it, Polly.
I was just gonna say, do you, you're the one that kind of really listened through this and transcribed. Is that kind of what you, or is it? I remember the, I remember the discussion, I don't remember i-in the minutes.
I remember we decided on a specific number, because that was easier to work with than saying, quote, the height of the summer road, or whatever, and eighty-eight fifty was definitely what was established in the end. It maybe took a while to get there, but that's my memory of.
Yeah, no, the eighty-eight fifty was, was agreed to, but. Um, I've been in situations where the datum has become a con-in conflict in the past, and by having a description tied to a physical feature just helps lock it in. It's good actually surveying practice as well.
So. Well, I just, it's important to get this right, because we're gonna be talking about this, and it's, we're, we're when we talk about the town council, the planning commission conditions of, on, on their recommendation are gonna be a key point of discussion, and I mean, we, we're, we're always choosing between a transcript of the meeting and um, an interpretation of the, of the point of what was said. So.
Well, there was clearly a dialogue.
Yeah, I remember that.
Brought it up, he clearly said he didn't want the building higher than the summer road. And then Doug jumped in and said, well, you know, there's a little bit of slope, and so that's when we kind of picked, you know, the top of theirs, which is twenty-five feet above the summer road. Um, and then, so twenty-five, you know, that, that would have put the summer road at that eighty-eight fifty, because there are drawings. And so there's whole dialogue going back and forth, and just for, you know, clarity, um, we settled on the eighty-eight, um, fifty number, but I think it's important to capture a little bit of the dialogue, that it's really to keep the building at the elevation, or the top of the building at the elevation of the summer road, and that's not captured in the minutes.
I think that that discussion, if that helps, Molly, is on page eight of just the minutes. I don't, I'm just looking at the minute side, yeah. And you s-see, it says, um, David Abraham noted that looking at the building cross-section, the proposed building is nine stories tall. Um, yeah, but it doesn't, um, and then you're right, Ogilvy jumped in, but I do remember some discussion there, so.
Did we also talk about, is that the actual building height was HVAC or any accoutrements of the, uh, uh, allowed to go above that, or was that the actual building? I, I thought that was part of the discussion.
Well, no, I, I think it.
It was a total, total, everything, especially with the building.
Yeah, because I kept. I kept bringing up the point that you have all this HVAC stuff up above, that's, is gonna be, you know, above the eighty-eight seventy-five that they were showing as the top of their building. And so there was that discussion, but when we got down to the eighty-eight fifty, it was reflected based on taking essentially twenty-five feet off of their top floor elevation on their cross-sections, which was shown at eighty-eight seventy-five.
Men's stipulation. What, Polly?
Uh, s- sorry, I thought I was on mute. I was just trying to pull up the meeting video to see if I could find the section, and I guess I turned off my video instead of my, my, uh, audio. Sorry about that.
Okay, um, this section was about a forty-five minute conversation, and I just kind of chose to
encapsulate.
encapsulate what was decided on. If we feel like we need a lot more of the dialogue, it was a lot of back and forth, talking about a lot of different points here and there, and I just thought, for clarity, it made the most sense to just kind of wrap it up with what we did, the decided upon conditions were, um.
Yeah, but.
Well, I think, you know, Jeff, I think the principle was pretty um, well-articulated, that we didn't want the building above the summer road, period.
Right.
And, and to try to put a number in that, uh, somebody came up with the, uh, eighty-eight fifty. But the principle, the, but the, the, I, I think if we just state the principle, that would, would that not be adequate?
Yeah, that's, that's what I think number nine needs to be enhanced, to state the principle, is the height of the building is not to exceed the height of the summer road.
Right.
And then I would like to say where the eighty-eight fifty came from, which the eighty-eight fifty was represented by the estate to be the height of the summer road at the center line of the building.
Right, and then we, so was the intent to split the difference between the low side and the high side of the building, or was it to give the entire building under the summer road? I don't know if we agreed to eighty-eight fifty, or.
We did.
The eighty-eight fifty was clearly discussed as.
Yeah, it was.
You know, as, I can't remember how wide the building is, but you know, you're gonna have maybe half of it a few feet lower and a half above. Um, John brings up the good point of, you know, does this include any, uh, parapets or, um, HVAC? Stuff on top.
Is the in our point, in our, it was only ordinance, yeah.
I don't think that was even a grasp.
Well, we, I think we did discuss it, and I feel like we acknowledged that they're gonna be above that. I think if we have want, I don't think we told them in sufficient, with sufficient clarity, if we wanted the height of the appurtenances to be eighty-eight fifty.
I, I agree with that.
But we, but they, they countered, when I brought it up, this is, a lot of that can be, you know, basically placed down in mechanical rooms and things like that.
Yeah.
And won't necessarily be up there, but you're still gonna have all your sewer vents and.
As we say, what if a vent goes above the roof, the vent's gonna go above the roofline, right, so.
Right, and then you'll have some sort of parapet hiding that. Um, so even at this, it's going to be. Go ahead.
Does this, does this, with these changes, is that I would encapsulate what you're trying to say, or do you think it needs more?
No, the height of the building is not to exceed the height of the summer road, determined to be eighty-eight fifty in elevation.
We want to have. Do we have determined, or we want to say, uh, represented by the estate to be?
Determined by the applicant to be eighty-eight fifty.
Right, yeah.
All right.
I'd like that, because, you know, we've not independently done any surveying and.
Exactly, that's, that's a little scary for us to say that, because I'd rather quote, quote them.
Right. Or instead of determined as, as represented by the estate.
There we go.
So, and then my last one is down on, uh, item eleven, water tank is gravity-fed. Um, that may be, um, the water tank is actually gonna be fed by a pump station. And so I would change this to that, the, um, water tank will gravity-feed the water system. And get rid of.
I don't want to say about that one, too.
Yeah, and I do just want to, as a kind of disclaimer, the purpose of this meeting is to prove the minutes of what happened in the last meeting, and not necessarily to, like, continue the discussion further, so.
I got it.
Right, yeah. Well, I, and again, I just, Paul brought it up, or not Paul, but, uh, the mayor brought it up that, uh, essentially wanted the water tank at the previous location that had been agreed to in the two thousand and fourteen agreement, which was, you know, a gravity-feed, but the way it's written here, it doesn't make sense, because to feed a water tank by gravity, you have to have another water source above it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's good.
And Molly, there, there was a lot of, there was also a discussion between, I mean, we, there was a point in the meeting when these conditions were listed out in eleven points. And then there was a great deal of discussion that followed. So there is a lot of, I mean, all, all of our minutes entail summary and interpretation to some extent, um, and I, I think we have to, we need to refine this.
Right.
Without getting into new topics of discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
Anyhow, that's the, uh, last of my comments.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Uh, Paul, I'm gonna turn, uh, no, Mary was up, was up next. Mary, if you're still with us.
Yep, I'm still here.
Oh, thank you. Um, any edits, corrections, thought, uh, correctors to the minutes, clarification?
My only one was the water tank, and I think that, um, that covers it, so, because, because that was the water tank, not necessarily related to that building, but it was part of the agreement, and that agreement will stand, so we don't necessarily need to spell that out.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Okay.
That's my memory, too.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mary, or we didn't?
Nope, that, that's good for me.
Okay, uh, Paul? Anything, uh?
Well, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's go to, uh, Paul, are you on still? Did we lose him? Oh.
Could you hear me?
Where? Yeah. Yes.
Oh, he's there, okay. Paul, can you hear us now? We can, we can't hear you.
Yes, could you hear me?
Very good, thank you. Any, uh, anything you'd like to, uh?
The only comment I had was the same as Jeff with respect to that paragraph nine. I'm happy with the solution for it.
Okay, all right. Um, all right, um, Mayor's ex-officio, any comments on the minutes?
Yeah, um, my problem was with item eleven, and, um, and first of all, when these eleven points came out, they were verbal, and there was a lot of cross-talk. And somehow Molly was, was able to extract from that cacophony, something that almost makes sense. So, I, this is to say that I appreciate her diligent effort to do that.
Absolutely.
But, the, uh, but to add a little context, and this is not, you know, we don't have to put this in minutes, but a little context, in the two thousand and fourteen agreement, one of the um, benefits to the town was if there was a water tank located actually well above, and if you could puff up that picture that I sent you today, the water tank is, uh, it's the blue dot, yeah, the blue dot, uh, yeah, yeah, that blue dot right there where the cursor is. And the, the benefit, at, at the time, the, the idea was that there would be ten houses, and this could gravity-feed water to all ten. Plus, it had the ancillary benefit that on an emergency basis, it could provide uh, emergency, uh, water for fire protection to the places that, uh, among others, Mary and I live in. And that was a, that was definitely a benefit of the town, and the idea of the discussion is we want to retain that benefit. Now, how it came out in words is, I can't reproduce.
Well, okay, just go back and listen in the anything related to fire or emergency service was never.
Was never spoken, no, no.
No.
I agree with that, but that was the rationale for keeping the tank where it is. And, um, but the, but I think that the minutes are reflect that it's not just the, the tank, that the, the water tank can gravity-feed, but that that its, its location is, has the same function or qualities that, with that in, uh, in the two thousand and fourteen agreement, and I don't know how.
Well, and I, I would take what we have, and if I would just offer a suggestion to what has been added to my comments on eleven, because there was a clear dialogue, um, Mayor, that you talked about, the two thousand and fourteen agreement, when you were talking. And so I would say the water tank will gravity-feed the water system as agreed in the two thousand and fourteen stipulation.
Okay.
Did we, did we actually, did we actually call that out in the discussion?
Yes, I, I remember the discussion of the mayor bringing it up.
Remember the mayor bringing it up, and I don't remember the exact words he used, but what I recall was that he said, um, sorry to talk to you, talk about you, uh, as a.
Like I, you know, did.
But so what I recall was that he said, well, the, that the water tank has to be in this, in the position that it's shown in the twenty fourteen, and I was concerned about that, because I didn't want to, I thought that what you were concerned about was that it was gravity-fed, not that it was in that exact location, because that, um, creates problems, because it's outside, it's owned by someone who's not, wasn't a party to the agreement. So there's mention of it in the agreement, so I just, what I was trying to do was just get to the intent behind it, and so I think I tried to clarify and said, oh, so the water tank is gravity-fed. And so that's why I said that, but if that's not, you know, that's what I recall the, the back and forth being.
Yeah.
And you recollect someone else kind of implying that, well, we're not making any changes to the twenty fourteen stipulation, so we don't have to call that out, like, it was kind of baked in.
The water tank is gravity-fed is, is nonsensical.
Right.
So, we're not putting something that's nonsensical, uh.
Does the stipulation speak to the location of the water tank, or is the development agreement? I know they're one and the same, but.
Um, well, it's, yeah, I think the stipulation is the master agree, is the master, and then the development agreement is an appendix to the stipulation, I think.
Find it. Um, I mean, no, they're both binding. They're two different documents. One was a stipulation for the court that we signed on, and then the development agreement was just between us and the, um, developer or the estate.
Right, but it shows the tank location in the development agreement.
And it's annotated to show the tank's, uh, volume and elevation. And those are important parameters to this whole discussion.
And if the.
This whole concept.
Town council wants to, you know, work with them to change the location based on their ability to get an easement that meets both, you know, the, uh, elevation and the connectivity. You know, that's up to the town council, but I think from the planning commission's perspective, it was, uh, we are recommending that they consider this rezone with a water tank essentially with serving the same function as what, as was agreed to in the twenty fourteen agreement.
Yeah, functionally, it needs to be in the same place, which is not necessarily in the same place on the map.
Right.
I think that, that's what you're saying.
Needs to be the location of function in the same way.
Correct.
As the system contemplated in twenty fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think this language goes us there.
Great.
My opinion.
I was, to Molly's point earlier, I just want to make sure that what we just, what, I, I do remember these discussions. I want to make sure the minutes reflect the discussion, not um, and we can certainly, when it goes to council and back to us, if it needs to be refined in terms of the details, that's great, but I want to focus on the minutes. Uh, so we, everybody's good with, right, this, this record, uh, this reflects everybody's recor-recor-recollection of the discussion, number eleven now?
It does mine.
Okay, very good. Anything else, any other place in the minutes that, um, uh, we need to potentially edit?
This edit was, um, a suggestion from Polly earlier today. I just baked it in, and so it was ready, but we can talk about that point. We went back and forth a lot on point number four.
Okay.
Approval, turn a year-round access for, you guys are um, playing hard with an old guy's eyes.
Yeah.
Driveway.
There we go, thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm almost, I'll give my screen as well, let's see.
Boy.
Approval, I'll turn a year-round access for a separate driveway. The town.
That's what I remember, uh, Polly, I'm.
Yeah, so it was, yeah, I agree that it was clearly, um, that it would be, um, the separate driveway as a condition, and then, then second is that, uh, we recommend that the town jointly support an application. But Dave's, Dave's criteria was clearly that it be a separate driveway.
So, I think we're.
And, and we went back and forth extensively about whether it was. And we went back and forth extensively about whether it was. What, whether the condition was merely for the estate with the town support to pursue. Approval, or whether it was instead for the estate to obtain approval.
My recollection is, Dave was very clear that it was to be a separate driveway.
Well, right, but, but it's, they have to get permission in order to satisfy the condition, they didn't, they don't satisfy the condition. Just by trying to get permission.
Correct, they have to be successful.
Secure, 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 yeah. Approve, yeah, approval means secure, I guess to me.
Right, right.
And we'll support that, we'll support their secu- securing that approval, I, I think it reads fine to me.
Yep, I agree.
Thanks, Polly and Molly. Um, anybody else in terms of the minutes? I think this has been good.
I've got one thing.
Okay.
We're on the same page. And I know Dave Abraham talked a lot on number ten. There was a lot of talk about the dedicated or the live-in caretaker units, or what do they call workforce housing? And the way number ten reads is that there'll be one unit of six hundred and fifty square feet. And I can't, I should have listened to the minutes again, I mean, the tape again, but I didn't. I, I had thought that, um, it would, there were, the state has offered three. And I thought Dave was saying they have to be a minimum six hundred and fifty square feet each, this makes it look like they only have to do.
No, he, my recollection is he just said the caretaker unit had to be at least six hundred and fifty. Somebody that's basically going to be living there full time.
Yes.
Yeah.
Like he, I think he wanted, my interpretation was he wanted to guarantee that one of those three workforce units. Would be dedicated for a live-in caretaker and that it would be at least six hundred and fifty.
Of the units?
One of the thirty.
Yeah, I think, yeah, at least one of the one that was going to be basically dedicated to the. Caretaker that had at least six hundred and square feet of livable space. If you're going to be living there.
John, are you asking how many net, uh, other units are dedicated to staff?
Well, it's the way I read this, it was like, well, now they only have to do one.
Right.
Workforce housing, which they confuse, they, it's confusing the way they put it, because it's basically onsite employee housing. Um, but.
I think this is what was, what was requested, or what was, I think this is the condition.
Yeah.
The way Molly has it.
Perfect, yeah, like, I just wanted to make sure that, I didn't think that he, that Dave was cutting it from three to one. And so this is good.
Okay, okay, I guess, I can see where, okay, uh, and for all the agreements, it's still three, but of the. One of the three, at, at a minimum, one of the three shall be, but that's, wait, this is just the minutes, we're not. Revising the history a little bit there, so, okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Good, well, thank you, everybody, um.
So, can I say one thing about this? Um, um, you know, retrospectively. I think we collectively did a lousy job of not having these on the screen to look at. And, and, you know, read carefully and do what we're doing now, then. Everybody was anxious to go home.
Again, I'd say, yes, we have, we would agree, but.
And, uh, so if I lived, I've always said if I had life available where I could do a better job, that's one of the things I would do.
They're already doing a better job today.
Well, I think that's why we decided to have a meeting just about this, uh, while it's still pushing our memories. Uh, because otherwise, we could, we would have possibly slid to September, but I, I think Chris had a good point of let's. Let's not let this slide, we have a chance to, uh, to take a mulligan a little bit, but not recreate anything, but clarify things. Um, so I think we're doing, don't disagree, Roger, I think, but I think we're doing the best we can. And again, Molly, great job on capturing a very complicated, long, long meeting, so thank you.
And reading my chicken scratching on the notes that I handed you.
That was helpful.
So, with that, um. My guess is thirty, thirty minutes, thirty-two minutes, that may be the longest discussion of meetings, uh, my guess is.
Are you ready for a motion, Mr. Chair?
Pardon?
Are you ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion, is there a motion to accept the, uh, approve the amendments from July fifth?
Yes, I would make the motion that we, uh, approve the amendments, um, for. The July fifth meeting per, amended per the discussion that we've had at today's meeting.
As amended, thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Marin. All those in favor, raise your thumb and say aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Minutes are approved, um.
Did everybody say yes, sorry?
Yes.
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 Thumbs and, thumbs and voices, those, thank you. Uh, item number four, new business before the planning commission. Um, see how no one else is there today? I don't think we have that, um. Agenda item five, date of next meeting and thoughts for the, I'll throw in thoughts for the agenda, but date of next meeting is the September twenty-fourth. Um, uh, nice time of year, I assume we'll have, unless I hear otherwise, we'll have folks here. And stick with that, stick with that time and, time and date. Um, Chris, uh, any thoughts on, on agenda, are we ready to tackle anything?
Well, um. Yeah, this, I, um, might be jumping the gun a little bit, but, um. HB forty-eight, in the twenty twenty-five legislative session, required municipalities to adopt the wild and urban interface code.
Yeah.
Um, which is, uh, an encyclopedia of, of code language. Um, that provides certain requirements for like defensible space. Um, construction materials, ignition, ignition, could, ignition resistant construction. Methods and materials, uh, and like fire flow requirements based on, yeah, well, fire flow requirements. Um, amongst other things. Uh, there's some debate as to whether it's a land use regulation or not, but the safe thing to do is to run it through the planning commission, and of course it, um. The, so the principles of the wild and urban interface code conflict a little bit with. Some of the regulations we have on the books for vegetation management, so we. And we have to do, we have to adopt the wild and urban interface code by December thirty-first. So that's four months of planning commission meetings and at least one town council meeting to get that done. Um, so I, at this point, I assume we're gonna. Need to have a presentation and discussion of that, maybe you get the fire department involved, we have a new, um, area fire marshal. From UFA, um, who is hot to trot on, um, adopting the wooey code, as I heard, uh, just yesterday, so. That is, um, something that we might.
Chris, is that going to be an extensive side-by-side comparison of our code versus that, like, that statutory language? And, and so does staff, who's going to do that, I guess?
Oh, I'll work with the, uh, legal counsel at this point, probably.
And.
Well, I think, I think if we do that, we're going to have to make some revisions in our own code, because I believe. That we prohibit landowners from cutting down trees.
Uh, yes, our vegetation, our tree removal. Restrictions are arguably contrary to defensible space provisions, and it sounds like. Our peer jurisdictions have all adopted the wooey code. So, um, and they all, they, they may have, you know, they're not, the, the defensible space. Type regulations are not cookie cutters, they all have their own take on conditions for removing trees, but, um. Yeah, we'll see, I mean, we need to do a, a more of a review of the code to see.
And, um, the, I've in the past run into issues with this and various water supply contracts. Um, relative to fire flows and what people thought they should be able to do versus what their contract said they can do. So, that, you know, applies to the folks in the Albion Basin, as well as the, uh. Some of the town agreement.
Just a little bit of history, we did have, I don't, don't remember how many years ago, John G, you might remember, we had the, we did the walkabout with. On defensible space, um, I, I think it was like a September timeframe, come to think of it. Um, but that wasn't, that was way before code or anything like that, I think we just did a, a walkabout was, um, around several structures, if I recall.
Right, Grizzly Gulch, Albion Basin.
Yeah, yeah, so, and, um. So we do have, so it's something we need to adopt by the end of the year, so we, we look at a couple, three meetings and then forward it to the. Town council no later than December, do we want to try to get it to them earlier?
Yeah, yeah.
I think you should, you should try to get it to the council by Nov- by their November meeting. So it gives them one, and I think as, um, Roger said. We, it will probably also entail changing some of our local code as well.
Right.
So that, so you'll look at them at the same time.
Yeah, side by side again.
Side by side.
Will that involve a public meeting if we change some of our code?
Yeah, you'll have to have a public hearing.
Right.
To do that.
Public hearing meeting.
Yeah, you just need to give ten days notice.
Right, yeah, uh, let's, let's try to make that our October, that's a lot of work between now and the end of October then. To have that site, to have a language reconciled, and then have a public meeting by end of October to get it to the council and for their November meeting, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, so that's going to be September and October, right, it's two meetings worth, and I think that it's doable. It's so much of it is, I mean, I've been working with the wooey code for a while now. I think it's the two thousand six version is what's required. Um, so I think that you guys are actually the outliers of not having adopted it yet. So I think you'll look at it and a lot of it just makes sense.
Sure.
And then the biggest issue is just how do you want to address the things that conflict?
Okay, okay.
So.
And, and we can also get the fire marshal or our fire guy here to explain why things are recommended.
Okay.
So for the September meeting, is it too early to have like a, a red line of how we. Recommended changes to the town's ordinances? Or do we want to just be presented with woo- wooey and then in October?
I think we could do them both, I think it makes sense to do them at the same time, I, I, sorry, Chris, what do you think, you're?
Well, I, I guess one thing I was going to observe is that we don't have a choice but to adopt the wooey code. We're doing our best to, to, uh, reduce conflicts in, in our code, I mean, I, I only have one in mind. And I don't even know, uh, if we adopt the text of the, I think we just adopted by reference. Right, Polly, and it becomes something that the fire marshal, um.
No, you, oh, the way I've seen it done is that you adopt it, but it's kind of like the building code. Where it's you adopt, yeah, so that the whole thing doesn't end up in your code, but it's attached as an exhibit. So, and then there are appendices, and you can decide, I think I have to look at the state code, what are required. But I was just looking at it for one of my other jurisdictions, and all it says is, you know, ten dash blah, blah. Blah, adopting the two thousand six version, attached with amendments, attached here too as a amendment A. Along with appendices X, Y, and Z.
Right.
Right, but we want to make sure that we don't end up creating, you know, a conflict within our own ordinance.
Yes.
From, so we want to kind of identify where those conflicts would be and resolve them if possible. And I guess my point is if we can get it all done in September, then that gives, you know, reasonable time if we have to. Do a public hearing, and then, you know, give the town council time.
You're pumping to the public here in October, then give it, give the council the November.
Right.
So, if we, if staff and council can tee us up in September, that's what we'll do. That sounds like a, uh, the agenda.
And could I, just two little minor things, one is that sometimes it's nice to do the public hearing, the first, even if you're not going to act on it. That way, if someone has input, you can hear it early on, but that's a minor thing. The other thing I just wanted to point out. Um, is just so you know that, um, I think the estate project is likely to go to. The council for a work session at the September meeting, so just so that you are aware of that.
Okay, good, thanks for sharing, uh, so are you.
Sorry, are you just suggesting that the public hearing also happen in September to give?
For the wooey. Yeah, I like, it's up to, you know, chair, what you prefer, what the commission prefers. I just have found sometimes it's nice to just notice it for the public hearing upfront. Because then if people have any input, you hear it upfront, but it does, it's not a huge difference, and legally you can do it either way.
Yeah, I, my, just my own bias, like, I, I hear you, I, that is an option. Are they, is there, is there, are they informed enough out of this, you know, cold to even have informed? Input in September versus sometimes they react to by October, possibly. That's, that's my, that's my own bias, I, I always think it's fair to have them, something to respond to. But, I'm, 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 if the commi- other commissioners want to do that in September, that's funny too. But if it's sixes, I, I, or on the side of October. Okay.
John, you are usually a, a big fan of, um, I think what you call a walkabout or a bike about.
Yeah, yeah, I talked to Chris about that a week or two ago, and I know Mike's been. Apparently is quite busy and lots of stuff, I, I would love to squeeze that in before the snow flies or wait and do a ski about, which we, we've also done. Um. Um. By October, I, I imagine the, the lift company is going to be zipping up their capital projects, whatever they're doing.
I hope so.
Let's hope so, right, yeah.
Yeah.
I think quite a few lifts around our region are going to be under construction in the snow, uh.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know about that, I, I don't think they're going to be zipped up by then, but.
Okay, take a number, I think there are quite a few in the area, like.
Well, you want to infer it the winter and do a ski about?
I, I, I guess I'm leaning towards that, but, uh, I, given. How busy the lift companies from what I hear, I don't know if it's, if we want to say, oh, by the way, can, can you give us a two hours of your time and give us a tour? Does anybody else have any thoughts? I, I, we haven't done a ski about in a number of years, I think that'd be, that would be fun, if anybody's up for it. I certainly am.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so let's, let's maybe plan on that, um, either. Oops. Let's plan on, let's plan on that, uh, possibly December, if, if we don't have any, uh, or, or January, let's see what Mike says. Chris, do you mind touching, next time you touch base with him to run that, put that idea?
Yeah, our planning commission meeting is scheduled for the week before the Christmas holiday.
Right.
I believe, uh, the fourth Wednesday is the twenty-fifth, and so we. Set it back to the twenty-fourth, so I think we set it back to the seventeenth, which, I don't know, some Yuletide cheer.
If we get, let's, let's, let's hope there's snow, right?
It's a nice quiet time in Alta typically early December.
Yeah, I, let's, I, I like that idea, the seventeenth, let's, uh, let's see if we can do an hour and a half, two hours ski about. I don't expect a cat ride to the top of Grizzly like we've done in the past, but that's, uh, just something, something on the mountain would be, would be great. So let's plan on that in December, a little reward for a busy year as well for all of us, um, it's been, we've had a lot of, a lot of, uh. Activity with the planning commission, and, um, so we've got our marching orders between, with September and October. Uh, we've got a good solid idea for December, and, um, with that. Motion to adj- entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a, all.
A second.
A second, Jeff made a second, all those in favor, adjourn.
Aye.
And thank you, everybody, safe travels, Marin.
Um, thank you.
Looks like it's clearing out a little bit, um. Looks like it's clearing out a little bit, um. And so thanks, thanks again for
Maren, you may want to call. Um, unfortunately, I got to get to the airport, but I could check with you once I get through security. Would that work?
Yeah, that's always better work.
Okay.
Talk to you later. Bye.
Okay, thanks, everybody. We'll see you very soon.